We'll call this meeting to order for Waseca Public Schools School Board. It's our regular meeting, Thursday, September 23rd, 2021, at 5:30 PM. And we are in the central building, second floor conference room. Please rise to the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Do you want to approve tonight's agenda?
First and a second. Yes, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to add dental to our accounts payable underpayment of claims in the amount of nineteen thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty four cents. I get it. First and a second, so let's make a motion. No, I'm sorry. Any discussion on either of those? All right, so first we'll approve the addition. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And then we'll go back and approve the full agenda. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, I'll move on to recognition of visitors. You have Ms. Zippel here to talk, but first I want to ask if anyone else in the audience wanted to talk during our public open forum. All right, no emails from anyone? All right, then Ms. Zippel, please come on up and she's here to talk about the FSA convention trip coming up in November. Thank you for being here.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ms. Zippel, Savannah Zippel. My phone name, kids call me Ms. Zippel. I am the EPFA advisor and the agricultural education educator at Waseca. Here to talk today just a little bit about National EPFA Convention and Expo. It is being held in person, but with certain safety protocols, of course, being placed on the hose DMS. We have a great group of kids that are ready to go for this year. The National EPFA Convention in Expo is held in Indianapolis, Indiana. And it is quite an experience. So on the way down there, we will stop and do several tours. So we have a tour plan for Honeybee Farm, a tour plan for Farroks Farm. We're also be going to the Field of Dreams. So lots of educational experiences. The national convention also includes a career expo, which is one of the largest career expos in the world. And it has a chance to engage with industry professionals. So there's lots of different opportunities for students to engage in everything with welding and plasma cutting to animal science and Zodiac, I don't know if you've heard of them, culvers, sponsors, all sorts of really great big industry names. Really good opportunity for students to just make those connections in the industry. And then along with the convention itself, we have some great guest speakers and motivational speakers that will be speaking. Really important to go this year because we actually have a student who's a national finalist in her Ag Science Fair project. So Carly Hamilton, this year competed this previous spring with her Ag Science Fair project. She has made it to nationals before with a previous project. But this year she is doing a project on the public perception of hemp and the educational outreach that can be along with that. And she's worked with a local hemp producer. So kind of important to be there and it's really just a great opportunity. Students call it one of the highlights of their high school career. Any questions that you guys have about it?
So you're sharing a bus with a number of other school districts?
Yeah, so we will be in the ag education realm and EPFA, we are split into different regions throughout the state. We are region number seven. So our region is made up of Waterville, Manuketo, Booming Ferry, Oatana, Bell Plain, all of those different schools. And so we'll be sharing a class and splitting classes. It helps keep the class play well. Also really helps with organizational matters when it comes to booking hotel rooms and everything. So everything's all laid out and ready to go. Also got a whole bunch of teachers having your back, so lots of eyes watching the kids down there.
How many children have gone?
So the applications are due tomorrow, so so far I think I have seven or eight applications in right now.
What is the cost per student?
Cost for student is about four fifty.
Okay.
Students put a hundred dollar down payment down right away. They can use money from fruit sales. So I don't know if any of you have bought fruit before, but that's where a lot of that money goes. They can use money from fruit sales. The chapter itself has voted to donate fifty dollars. And then the students will also be asking our EPFA alumni for fifty dollars as well. So they have a chance to quite a lot of it paid for if they could. Any other question?
When I was in high school, we went to Kansas City, Missouri. Now, when did that get changed to Indianapolis?
I don't remember the exact change. It used to rotate between Kansas City, Indianapolis, and then Kentucky, Boobeyville, Kentucky. But Indianapolis, I know, put a bid in for the next ten years, for the next ten years.
So, oh, I was thinking it was over Thanksgiving.
That's okay.
Is it over Thanksgiving or is it October?
It's in October, end of October.
Oh, okay, there's two different dates. So, oh, I'm getting confused, but yes.
No, that's the schedule from the region and they might have just updated the schedule last week to get the outline. You know, there might be a day, but it is end of October. We'll be leaving on that Tuesday and coming back either late that Friday or Saturday morning.
I'll make a comment. I just feel very involved in National EPFA and had a lot of new experiences and had a lot of things to say about, especially at the convention.
It's amazing seeing kids, how motivated they get back, they get when they come back from convention, not only for community service projects, but for leadership. I had some students realize it's a real motivator and it's really cool to see. It's all fifty states plus the Virgin Islands and Puerto Rico. So one of the activities that we do when we're down there is they have to get a signature from every single state because EPFA, they have the states on their back. So they meet friends from all around the country and they get to experience that as well.
Looking forward to it.
Yes, yes.
Sounds like a great, great opportunity.
Any other questions? I'm excited to go. The kids missed out last year because it was virtual, so it'll be nice to be back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Zippel did let me know that she was also available for questions for the outdoor classroom, whether or not she sticks around tonight, but if you have questions about that later on, she was part of getting that project going also. So that is on the agenda for later. All right, if there's no other visitors who wish to speak, then we will move on. Supreme, would you like to make a motion for our payment of claim?
Yes, I reviewed the claim for the month of August and recommend the action of the payment of our accounts payable of one million, eight hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and ninety seven dollars and ninety four cents. And also the payroll of eight hundred and seventy four thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars and seventy nine cents.
Second, first and a second. So that was accounts payable that we had on the agenda plus the addition of dental. Any discussion? Right, carrying on, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'm going to motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion that we approve.
First and a second, any discussion? Carrying on, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, so I'll move on then to our information items and begin with our superintendent report.
Very good, thank you. Meeting board, as we move through the beginning of our school year, it's great to be here and have students back in our buildings and enjoying what, what school is supposed to look like here as we get into 2021, 22 school year. My report tonight really has two parts that both are relatively brief, but they, I think they're very pertinent what we have going on right now. As we move back to the school year, activities are progressing smoothly. Students are competing, performing, you know, we got the classic this last weekend, which is really exciting for students to be able to be out and about and enjoying the community in that way. Our enrollment is settling in a little bit. Elizabeth will speak to that a little bit in her report here. But we've had a lot of movement in the last three to four weeks. It seemed like there was a lot of movement in late August and early September as to what students were going to be enrolling, whether they were not. And so we're to October one also, because I think the September one gives us a picture of where we were a few weeks ago. But there's just been a significant number of things out in the last few weeks as students moved up to that first day of school and then those first few weeks of school. I would say that we are not at the place where we were to begin the 2019, 2020 school year, that area, but we are up from where we were last spring, which is a good sign. We'll have to see how that goes in the next few weeks here and looking forward to seeing, like I said, the October one number, which we base a lot of our funding on for the school year. Right now, as far as managing what we have going on with our health services and our pandemic, not talking a lot about that right now, but just for the boards and the community's awareness, we are less than 1% of our students who are impacted with COVID right now. So we are managing that as well as we can. Our students are, are being responsible and staying home when they need to. Our health services is also doing a nice job encouraging families to stay home when they have symptoms. What we are seeing is that that's very distributed throughout our pay levels. So we don't have a cluster, we don't have anything right now to target with at this very moment, which is positive. We are seeing families impacted. So when someone in the household gets it, we are seeing other family members become positive over the course of a few weeks. That's just been an anecdotal trend. We have not seen it in school yet, you know, spreading throughout school, which is positive. Busing continues to be a little bit of a chessboard. Starting the school year with staffing and trying to get routes lined up. Our bus companies are not any better off than any other bus company in the state you might have read about. So we're not in a position where we're not able to transport students. It just means that we have to be creative at times. So I said it last time and I'll say it again. If you're thinking bus six is supposed to show up and a bus shows up with three on the front and we find out that they're taking me to the right spot, then be patient with us as best we can because our bus companies are working through that as they, as they do. And we have had a few times to adjust, we've had to adjust in activity time because the bus wasn't available to leave the high school at the time we wanted it to. And so I don't think that students probably noticed any difference in that because it happened enough in advance. But Mr. Head of ours is working with our bus companies closely on that. And then just the final detail of this beginning of the school year is now students are going to take our fall assessments. Got some NWA's happening, we've got some free tests happening in our, in our, some of our upper level classes. They get ready to get into the trimester to see what they can do, what they learned and what they know. So I'm looking forward to seeing that progress as the school year goes on. We've kind of used the mantra this year that it's okay to be where we are. It really is, it's just not okay to stay there. You gotta keep moving forward. So you've heard me say this before, we're not going to lament a what if about where we could be, but we have to acknowledge that this is where we are and we're going to continue to be better. And our students are doing great and it's fun to see them in the hallways and see the smiling faces and everyone's been excited. And I heard, I was at Hartley the other day and, you know, I could never been so excited about school lunch as a second writer that I was talking through that particular day. So it just feels positive to start the school year. We know that we're prepared to adjust as we need to as the school year goes on, but as of right now, our, our plan is staying very positive. Questions on that part?
I'll think it's.
Okay, very good. The next piece is really kind of a, it's just kind of an update on the, on what we're doing with our strategic planning. We've been working really since last spring about preparing our strategic plan and taking it to the next level where it becomes more measurable. So we can record to you a little bit less about just what we're doing, but how we're doing, what the progress is. So what you have in front of you is really what our, our version of the district vision card for the start of the school year would be. And you have enough? I'll give you this one here. Okay, very good. This is in your update too electronically, if you choose to look at it that way. So essentially what we've done is we've taken our strategic plan and our operational plan, which you had a chance to see earlier this summer and spring, and then really developed some goals and measurements. Probably going to measure these things over the course of the next school year into going forward from there. So for example, in the area of student achievement, you know, one of the areas on the World's Best Workforce is to increase performance. So we're looking at where we are right now, we're at 83%, hoping to improve that to 90% by most. Setting some really measurable goals that we can work with. As you see throughout the course of this document, there are some redundancies. There are some things that really two or three of these focus areas are really measured by the same thing. And so that's going to help us with as we move into the continued growth of our strategic plan into the next two years, but then also what the next iteration of our strategic plan is. We may be able to condense some things measuring only the same topic. There might be something that we notice isn't here with that. So what our department and building leaders are doing now with this is they're taking this vision card, this district vision card, and with their building leadership teams or departments, however they're choosing to do that, they're going to develop a building or a department vision card. So the Hartley vision card or the Building and Grounds vision card. And that will be based within the envelope what we have going on here, but it will be working towards these goals directly for them. So those directors and principals can work with their staff to say, okay, which of these really focuses on Hartley? And they can work through those particular goals. But some departments might find now is that I'm having a hard time finding where I fit into this. In which case this will evolve to help create more areas because we just, as this is the first time I've been through this exercise, there's a little bit of abstractness that we're working through. I don't really know, what, what do we want this to look like? Well, we have to kind of go through a little bit to see what it's going to look like. And so our building leaders and department leaders are doing that right now. I'm looking forward to the next three to six months because as I come back to be talking about my goals, you know, my first goal was to work on these vision cards. And I really hope to be able to say, we're moving towards this progress and here's the data that shows me that. While we're in strategic plan. So I wanted this to be in your hands. I'm excited about this. Once the buildings have a chance to work through their building card or department cards, there might be even a spot where we go even deeper. So maybe Hartley has a vision card, but then third grade has a card. Or the high school has a card, but then social studies has a card. Won't work everywhere because in technology, does technology, the technology card is probably okay for that team unless they want to divvy that out a little bit. So as I work with our leaders in the next three days on their one-on-one goals and their, their own personal growth goals, one of their tasks is to bring me their vision card that we can work through together and see how that's going. So I think it's going to be an excellent opportunity for us to really demonstrate growth and talk about how we're doing, you know, the digital. So it also takes some of the ambiguity and anxiousness out of the conversation. Oh, he didn't do very well. No, but we're in the progress mode. Okay, great, that sounds good. What we will add in 2022, 23 will be a backwards line. We want a better, better interview here, so we're going the wrong direction. We don't have that right now. If we go that, if anything happens to go that way. And then these measures will like, it says here 2021 data. We'll include that in as we get moving throughout the rest of the school year. I just wanted to bring that to, to you for the board to review and take a look at and if you have questions about it, we can always visit more about this. But I'm excited about the evolution of taking our strategic plan from really high level into how is it actually going to impact on working with us.
Where did you ever come up with the idea for vision cards?
Well, it was some of the leadership trains that we've happened to do in the previous district, previous opportunities that I've had to work with, with some leadership training, that's when it comes to strategic plan development, this is usually part of the process. And as I moved into this position, this was really in the works to some degree. It just kind of got a little waylaid by our health crisis that we were working through. But this format is one that I've used previously and I've learned from various trainings, unfortunately, that I've had. And this seems to be the most, for me personally, this is the most clear way to do it. The last type of graphic organization you could use, this seems to work for me.
Manuketo had that, they showed their vision cards on Monday and they were focusing from their, their equity conference that they had over there. That they're working on things with trying to get different teachers into the school building with different ethnic backgrounds, things like that. So, yeah, you can just use it for everything. It just puts everything in a fluid or in a, a nice area that you can read and it's all fluid. It's living and breathing and can be modified. It's just really cool, it's a nice tool.
Baseline on your imply is what we're at now today?
Yes. Yeah, it is. It's a good direction.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for your report. Ms. Berry.
All right, thank you for your, your time this evening. First, can you guys hear me okay? Now I can't hear you. Can you hear me? Okay, so if it's okay, I'm just going to keep talking. If you have a question, maybe just raise your hand and then I'll pause if that works. So I, again, appreciate your patience as, as we are all learning, we're doing our best with sound and trying to get that to work. So again, thank you all for your patience for you there and as well as you listening online. Do you have a few items for you this evening? First of all, we do not have, right now, we are not reporting on financial year-to-date versus prior year. The, the reason for that to start off the year is right now we're still in our audit process. So we're still closing our audit year from the 2021 school year and then moving into the 2122 school year. There's a lot of entries that basically cross years and it, it, it doesn't look as clean as it should. Everything is correct, but with the entries that we need to make, it's, the reports are not as clear to somebody that's maybe not as close to school finance. So my hope is by October, we'll be able to start sharing those reports with you and you'll see some really clean information of current year versus prior year. So I just want to let you know that we're still working through that audit process. That's going very well, but our auditors aren't on site until the middle of October. So there's still a lot of in-between right now and we're working through that. Another thing Mr. Hudspith had mentioned earlier is we, we are looking at enrollment now and now is that time where we're taking those snapshots. It's a day in a month. And so the report that you're looking at is a little closer to the start of the school year. So we do know that there were some fluctuations as Mr. Hudspith had mentioned, we're, we're settling into that enrollment now. By looking at where we are starting, we are starting higher than where we ended. So that is definitely a positive and it's right in line with where we thought or what we had projected our budget numbers to be based upon. So again, hopefully we're being conservative at this point and, and we'll figure out how that natural flow will move through the rest of the year and we'll continue to update you on a monthly basis on, on what that enrollment count is. And I guess along the same lines with enrollment, some news that we received within the last couple of weeks, the, we'll say the governor of the state of Minnesota is recognizing that fiscal year 21 was, was a hard enrollment year for a lot of school districts. And even though it was not approved with the legislative session, so one of the things on the table was looking at what that declining enrollment was from our fiscal 20 year to our fiscal 21 year. There was a proposal on the table to try to address maybe a higher increase to help offset that aid loss because of the loss of students. That didn't happen at the legislative level, but the governor did take a look at that. And part of the, the federal funds moving forward is to address a little bit of that. So there, there's going to be a grant available. It will be tied to federal funding and it will be applicable to fiscal year 22. Unfortunately, it's not going to be applicable to the current year that we're auditing. But there will be a little bit of federal revenue to help offset that, that larger decline of a loss of student enrollment for all districts across the state. So they will be looking at our 21 student, year 21 students versus our year 20 students and taking that number into account, but it won't be applicable to, until the 2122 school year, which we're currently in. So that will be, for us, it's around, I'll say anywhere between a hundred thousand and a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Again, it is a grant process. They have made it clear it's not revenue replacement, so there will be strings attached to it and assurances that we need to adhere to. But again, it's just another opportunity for districts to try to help stabilize their fund balances as well as their fiscal responsibility. So just, just some news there for you. And then the last thing I wanted to touch on was a little bit regarding the levy that we've got proposed for this evening. So this is just in conjunction with the workshop that we had just a couple of weeks ago, really preparing you for the levy cycle. Normally what we do at this time of year is ask the school board to approve the maximum levy. This way it gives us as, as an entity to take a moment, really review the numbers, see if there's any changes. Ironically, there was a new report run today and actually changed our numbers from what the report that you're seeing. It was not significant, it was about twenty five hundred dollars. But again, is, I just, it's, it's just another example of things are constantly changing and that's a reason why we ask school boards to approve the maximum because it gives us flexibility to, like I said, look at those numbers, make sure the state has numbers that they feel comfortable with. And then when we come to December, we will prove an exact dollar amount. And it may be less than what we're approving now or it may be the exact same, but it just gives us that time to really dig into it and then feel comfortable moving forward, what will be best for the educational program as well as our community members. So I'm going to pause and see if there's any questions and see if I can hear them.
No questions.
Okay, thank you.
Ki, did you want to start us off?
Sure. We know that the community ed and, community ed is doing very well. You know, JNS is running and they are five days a week, you know, enrollment. And they are very happy, they have packed their building, I mean, their building. And, you know, all the activities for children are in place. Everything went online, you know, the book. But if anybody needs to have a printout, they just need to stop by by the office and they will print it for them. But everybody seems to be happy online, you know, you can, you know, you can see what is out there. There are a lot of classes or opportunities for adults. They started to do, I think, again, a couple, you know, you know, using the buses and go trips. I mean, I think Paul was very happy and, you know, everything's going well. They did a couple pre-screening sessions or days because they were behinding. You know, last year they didn't do it for the middle children and they are catching up on that. The community ed and I can let Julie to talk about negotiations. But it's very interesting process and we had two meetings and I'm starting to run along.
Charlie.
I've been missing an action, so I haven't attended.
I think you had a good excuse, it sounds like it was a good trip. You're making us all jealous, but.
We had the DEAC meeting and it was nice how Mr. Hutmeyer had brought up how they want teachers to be looking at how they're teaching to the, using the assessments or teaching.
Yeah, so not, not just teaching to the test, but maybe teach how to take it.
How to take a test, yeah, be more purposeful in how you are taking it. So that kids are starting to see that it does mean something and how it's going to affect things down the road.
Yes, because we reviewed the MCA results.
And then we had a facilities meeting before this meeting. And just looking at where we want to go in the future, how we're going to be setting up the questions down the road or where we're looking at. Still preliminary, we're still fine tuning our path.
I believe we're going to talk a little bit more facilities that are October, so that'll be good. So, yeah, I attended the DEAC also and just, we did, we did review the MCA results and we'll get, there'll be more detail on that when we do like the World's Best Workforce. So that'll be kind of a bigger, but everyone, I'm sure statewide, your test, your standardized test scores are down. So Waseca is the same. So we're all a little disappointed, but one thing that's interesting that I, I found really interesting is our participation rate was really high, I think like 90%. And, and the average statewide participation was maybe seventy-five or something like that. It was a lot less, so, so we're not, it's not a real true picture because so many of our kids took it, but not all of the rest of the kids. So it's kind of a, again, it's just one assessment, we do many. But they can talk about they're, they're doing their fall assessments right now and then they'll do winter assessments. So we'll, we'll get more details on that at our, at the World's Best Workforce presentation later this year. And then negotiations is moving.
And then negotiations is moving really well. We've made a lot of progress, particularly on language items. And then we'll probably be coming to the board pretty soon with specific number details. So, yeah. We have another meeting scheduled for next week and I just think it's all wrapped up pretty soon. So I think that'll make good progress. I think that's all I have.
So finance, we continue to look at facilities and the use of our ESSR funds. Also, ongoing projects and Safe House to School, we kind of had an update on that. And then facilities meeting, we also talked about preferred projects and the progress that we're making. And then personal community, we talked about rate stacking. And then the Apex partnerships for small-sized preschool classes. And early registration, innovation and career pathways. So, that's it.
What is the update on the Safe House to School or the process? Is it coming through?
Well, we're hoping at the end of this month, but I, I don't know. You're making progress. The lights went up today.
For that, yeah, for the cross, yeah.
So hopefully that means you're next.
They'll move down the road.
Yeah. Yeah, they are, but the lights are flashing red now, correct? So that's.
I'm seeing people cross there. Maybe they're gonna cross there anyway, but it'd be nice to actually have a spot.
My thing's been covered.
I was financed with, I was covered. We did go through policies which are later. We didn't have anything significant in those, but it's interesting to see them understand where they come from. I did also go through the Phase 3 training, which is from MSBA. Covered a lot of things about assessing where each of the individuals come from, where our strengths are and how that fits in versus the board as a whole. Also talked about how good meetings are ran and we saw lots of examples how they are not ran. So, Julie, for running good meetings.
Those are the funniest videos. That's a fun stream.
So it was good.
You said I want to share some of that. So people can, they can at least have a good audio. Well, Eliza and Lynn, did you guys have something to wanna share about the high school?
We had a student council meeting yesterday to discuss like homecoming week and our dress days and stuff like that. But I think we're meeting again on Friday to do some more planning and get posters up for the dress days stuff.
Our football team is 3-0 right now and hopefully 4-0 tomorrow. We had a pre-game meal a little bit ago, it's a little late, but.
Yeah, and for band, we just had the Classic here in Wasika, which it was a super cool experience finally getting to do it again because we missed out last year. And then this year, or this year, oh my goodness, this weekend, we're going to Rosemount and Irondale. We have a doubleheader show this weekend, so that'll be really fun. Volleyball, we have a game, home game on Tuesday against Fairmont. So if you wanna support our volleyball team, please come. And then the fall play, just started rehearsals this week and it's called Trap. And I think the dates are 18, 19, 20 of November. It's the week after indoor. And then, yeah, we already mentioned our student council meeting. And there's a lot of stuff going on. It's really good to be back in school and seeing everyone.
Good, thank you. You guys wanna turn us off with our board feedback if you have?
Sure. I guess I would just like to thank everyone who worked with the Classic. It's really hard to list everyone, but I would especially like to thank Edna Burns and Mary and Jack Williams for all of the work that they put in. Pulling off that day is not an easy task and they do an amazing job every year and they make it so fun and such a good experience. So I'd like to thank everyone who helped with that.
I wanna thank you, but I have a positive note. And Mr. Wenland has been showing up a couple of times and I think he starts coming back teaching on Monday.
Oh, wow. Yeah, thank you.
I was gonna say the same thing about the Classic that Lindsay said that there's just so many people who volunteer and businesses that put their efforts and time into doing that. So that's, it's very successful and it's very nice to have. Thank you.
I made it a point this fall to try to get some, to some athletic events that I don't normally get to. So in the last few weeks, I was able to get to a boys soccer match, a girls soccer match and the volleyball team. I'm hoping to get to tennis next Monday. Hopefully I can get there. And it's been kinda neat to see. I know football usually is a pretty big deal here in Wasika. And I haven't been to a football team, that's kind of surprising. But it was really fun to watch soccer, both boys and girls, volleyball. So, yeah, something different, but something pretty neat too, so.
Thank you.
So I want, mine is the football game and it was nice to see Beth Bogan out there. And, and honorary director. But all the funds are due, we need to pass buckets for regulations for cancer. And, so, good to see the boys win.
I was gonna mention the tackle answer night for football, so I think it's cool that, I know we do it, it's kind of similar in the basketball season too. I think it's just really neat things that get kids involved and processes like that. And the pretty recognized teachers, we're currently going through that.
It's really interesting. They raised the buckets across. I think our road improved that.
We did, that made me want. We might have started early, but.
That was all I had.
I just wanna say what a nice article it was with John Hanson on 9/11. That was a very well-written article, by the way, very cool. And it's, that was a tough day. I remember I was working at Austin Mutual and that happened. And my brother-in-law got the last train out of Manhattan when he saw planes flying and he's like, hmm, something's not right. And he just got out of there. I think the last big item for me would have been the Challenger explosion when I was in high school. So it's kinda neat to document history like that and get a teacher's perspective of when he was teaching how it affected all those kids and how do you react and teach to that. So, very cool, nice job.
We have friends about every year. He uses.
Way to recognize our Facebook reporter here in the audience tonight.
Like I said, I was missing an action. I've been on the East Coast the last two weeks, two and a half weeks. Toured, toured a lot of places. Got to sleep. We slept on a sailboat in the Boston Harbor. I'll find where the Boston Tea Party happened. Really, really a cool experience. And walked the block there that Paul Revere supposedly rode that night. Interesting, his first part of that trip, it wasn't my boat. It was my boat that crossed, it was across the bay before he rode the horse. And we visited, did visit the 9/11 memorial yesterday. Got to see the Statue of Liberty again, how that was put together. So a lot of, did a lot of history. I, you know, a lot was on the Revolutionary War and the chances that folks all took. You know, because they would have, they would have died had they, had they lost, had they lost the Revolutionary War. So it's really interesting to see that perspective, how this country has evolved from that, from the moments back then. So, that was a great trip. We were in 12 different states for the last two and a half, plus the District of Columbia. So, but I understand the boys have won three games in a row and so we're back here in Wasika now. Ready to, ready to be back in the board, in the board chair here where I need to be. So anyhow, good to be back.
Good to be back.
I would like to say thank you to our community, to, you know, the police and everybody who volunteered to make the parade successful. You know, the streets and everything, it was well organized and almost flawless. Yeah, and the second, you know, I want to thank you to our counselors, Mr. Marvin and Mrs. Miss Me. I want Mr. Marvin and also Jessica and Ronnie, they helped, you know, the end of the summer and the beginning to work with PNCO classes and give it a schedule for the kids who had to switch and turn and they were very busy and they did a great job again.
All right, I think that is all for reports and feedback and we can move on into our action items. I get a motion for our gifts and donations. Would you guys like to approve this?
I will, we approve the class, the gifts and donations. And I said that, he just said.
You just went to a meeting.
I know.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, very generous.
Yeah, really some new things.
Thank you very much.
There's no further discussion, then I will call for a vote. And since this is a resolution, that is a roll call. When I call your name to say yes or no, for I or name, Joe, one, one, Grant.
Yes.
Pete.
Yes. Yes.
Julie, yes, yes. Katie.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
And Adida.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Can I get a motion? Actually, before we get to item B, I'm gonna have Mr. Hudspith explain, explain this.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify a couple of quick things as far as this resolution before the board considers it's action. So to the west of our practice fields out there, near the junior, senior high, we do have some land. It's kind of labeled as the, as the school nature site out there to the west. And over the last several years, we haven't really utilized that land as opportunistically as we could. And so with the partnership of Clint Link and his new role, kind of found out about some opportunities along with Ms. Syphil and Mr. Abel who feel like they can work some of that land into their agriscience and science classes and have the opportunity to get students outside and engaged. And so we're looking forward to doing that. We wouldn't need a resolution to do that. Okay, we own the land, we can do what we want in that nature. The Department of Natural Resources in the state of Minnesota has a school forest program that allows them to come in and help support us in whatever way we want them to, to help meet those needs. So it could be, we can help work with them to develop the long-term stewardship plan of the forest. They could come in and help us with some Arbor Month pre-seedlings if we wanted, just some examples that are on here. Advise onsite management, things that we can do. In order to be approved for that particular work with the DNR, what the state and the DNR asks us to do is to pass this resolution just saying that we as a board are designating this land for that purpose. It doesn't relinquish any decision-making control. It doesn't mean that we're locked in anything. We could decide a year from now to change that. But for right now, just, it's similar to, to be quite honest, similar to the resolution that we made with regards to our fall plan. Well, that was more about making it public what we're doing versus changing anything because it really did have been the same current practice. So what this does is basically say, this is what we're hoping to use this land for right now, which then makes us eligible for the DNR's additional support if we should want it. But again, as I mentioned, Ms. Syphil, Mr. Abel and any other staff who wants to be part of that process, we do that as they see fit, which may not include any work with the DNR, or it may. But then we've managed to support this, this purpose. What the other option that we can do with this is we would potentially have a committee of decent board members that might be on it as well as community members to help say, how do we want this to look like and advise us down the road for that. And again, the process begins with the board saying, yeah, we should consider that for right now. So there's still decisions to be made, but this is the first step. So hopefully that's helpful to help put that in context.
I think what's kinda interesting about this for me is that my son was a scout and he became an Eagle Scout and his project to become an Eagle Scout was to work in this area and to pave some path and build some bridges. And I won't tell you how long ago that was, but it was quite a while ago. So, yeah, it's been kind of sitting there for a long time now, really being utilized very well.
Brian Morris did it as his Eagle project, right? After your stuff.
I believe he did matches too, right? The movie, there was that Levi.
Levi has a bench.
Yeah.
But no, and, well, Ms. Syphil had a lead obviously, but she said she just went to a conference or a seminar up in Forest Lake where they have a really strong environmental science program. And I'm like, there's just so many possibilities and it sounds like we have more possibilities by passing this resolution than if we just left it as it was. So I think that's kind of.
Right, right. It doesn't really, again, it doesn't hinder our opportunity to do whatever we like, but it does open up an extra door in that direction if we choose to walk the road.
Well, if anyone would like to make a motion, I think he also needs to read the resolution. So whoever would like to do that?
We got the resolution here.
You got it? Yes, Charlie would like to.
But I'd like to, I, I guess I'm just wondering, why is that parcel divided into two different, two different sections? There you go, 19, 9.6 acre plus a 50.24 acre or something. What can you tell us about that?
Guess one's in section six and one's in section seven.
Is that, is that the issue?
Yeah, that would be my guess, breaking it up because it's a little complex section. I can, on this website which Clint Link has developed, it's got a picture of it on there. I did print that page, I apologize. But it's one physical piece, not two distant.
It must just be how it's planted.
Must be. It's in two hundred townships, that's why. Oh, okay. Well, no, it's, it's in two sections. It's in two sections, okay.
Okay, I guess when, when this came about, being in the farming age, I'm always a little nervous whenever it's that deal with the DNR. Things change sometimes and they're not always prepared for an environment of people. And that's, that's my hesitation on this proposal is that if you look at the DNR, it's just sometimes it gets difficult.
But this has not given the DNR any control of those items?
It doesn't, no, no. Nor does it commit us to actually working with them at this time.
So it's strictly as far as advising.
So we still retain everything about the land that we've been for?
Because someday, you know, if we add an additional school in that area, some other, some other state entity could come along and say, well, for this many students, you gotta have this much, you gotta have this much land for playgrounds and a lot of other. You want another soccer field out there or you gotta move a baseball diamond or something like that. Then things get, then things get a little bit more difficult from dealing.
Yeah, we're not committed anything pretty current time by doing this.
So you can read this a month from now if you want. Any other discussion or are you ready to make a motion? So we can discuss more.
I'm gonna read it.
Of course I do.
Okay.
I think you can read it and then at the bottom, well, wait. Well, this is, your motion is reading the resolution and we'll get it.
Okay. Resolution relating to the partnership with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources whereas Independent School District Number 829 would like to pursue educational partnership opportunities with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources utilizing Independent School District 829 proper. Now therefore be it resolved to school board of Independent School District Number 829 proves the establishment and maintenance of the Wasika Junior and Senior High School outdoor classroom comprising of said parcel. The south 330 feet of the south half of the southeast quarter, section six, township 107 north, range 22 west, containing 19.96 acres more or less. And the north 907.64 feet of the north half of the northeast quarter, section seven, township 107 north, range 22 west, lying east of the railroad, which is no longer there, in case anybody hasn't noticed, containing 50.04 acres more or less. This is subject to highway easements. This is subject to highway easements, railroad right-of-way, and support the seating enrollment of said school forest. The Minnesota Department of Natural Resources School Forest Program for educational purposes.
That is your motion?
That's my motion.
Second. And the first and. Your first and a second. Is there any further discussion or questions? Do we have any classes already that are utilizing this space, or is this something that's?
No, not that I'm aware of. I can't speak at conference.
There's no further discussion, then I'll call for a vote. And again, this is a roll call. Grant.
Yes.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
I am, yes. Ked, please. Charlie.
As a, yes.
Adida.
Yes.
All right, motion carries unanimous. All right, moving on. Can I get a motion for item C?
I'll make a motion to approve 2021 following change list.
First and a second and a third. Any discussion? All right, carrying that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item D?
Make a motion to approve the certified maximum table 2022.
Right.
Your first and a second. Any further discussion or questions?
Just to clarify, is it our December meeting? We actually approved the exact amount, correct?
For the discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. I get a motion for item E.
So move.
This is for the, to approve the October National FFA Convention Trip for Wasika FFA. Any further discussion? Any opportunity? I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. I get a motion for item F.
I'll make a motion to approve the review policies that were reviewed at the post-committee. That's 407, 408, 409, 410, 412, 416, and 417, covering right to no, in a medical league, drug testing, and chemical use, et cetera.
First, can I get a second? First and a second. Any discussion? All I was thinking was, hope we never need to use some of these policies, but it's because they're. All right, I think further, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. And that brings us to the end of our action items. Moving on to upcoming items and reminders. Homecoming is the week of October 4th, so I didn't see what the dress-up days are and all that kind of stuff. Are you guys, are you planning a dance and everything?
Yeah, the dance will be after coronation on Thursday.
Okay. Our next work session is Thursday, October 7th, 2021. And then our next regular meeting is Thursday, October 28th. And please note that this is the fourth Thursday because we pushed it back a little to the beginning. Any other things to discuss or remind us about? Can I get a motion into adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye. Any? Thank you all. Thank you all for coming.